That heat's overpowering now. Okay, it's 5:00 PM and I'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, Dr. Miller.
Here.
Dr. Barr.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. All righty, go to pledge of allegiance. Dr. Miller, can you lead us in the pledge? Everybody will stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go into recognition of students and staff and we'll start with the Heritage Day recognition. Mr. Price.
Yes, well, I would like to just say that Mrs. Perrin is here. She was on the lead for Heritage Day, so she can represent this much better than I can. Just so that you're aware of the logistics of things, we have another presentation later that's using this smart panel. We're hooked up wirelessly over there, so we're using this smart panel over here with an HDMI cable, so if that's a little bit off, I apologize because I know we do stream the meetings and she's not in frame. All right, everybody, that's what we're doing today.
Good evening. This is the fourteenth year that I've been head spearheading or spearheading the Heritage Day. And this year, I thought it worked really well. We had a lot of presenters that were able to participate. COVID in the last couple of years have kept things kind of low key, but this year we went all out. So I put together a PowerPoint and I just wanted to walk through and show you some of the pictures that happened on October the sixth with our elementary students. This was kindergarten through fifth grade. Just to give you a little background information, we did twenty-minute intervals. The presenter stayed in one place and then the kids had a five-minute transition. So then they went around to different stations. So the first thing we had was butter making and that was by the Bulltown Historical Area and Society. These people were phenomenal. They were very equipped to come in. They were used to doing the presentations that children love doing and they got to make their own butter, got to sample it or take it home. Another presentation that we had was wood carding and it was by Lucas Arden. He is a Gilbert County High School student. And the kids, our elementary students, were very excited to see one of their own high schoolers to participate in our Heritage Day this year. Another presentation we had was blacksmithing and it was Brent and Levi Good. Brent, he came in the morning and Levi, his son, came in the afternoon. I think they also presented at the Cedar Creek whenever they had their program over there. We had square dancing this year and that was by the Lynn and family. They all came in. The kids had a great time enjoying learning how to square dance. Wool setting by Debbie Marzel. We had wood burning by David Gerlach and he's from Calhoun County. He also has his own business. It's the Gerlach Rustic Wood Design. Furs and Huds by Tom Snyder. He's from Gilmore State University. Bread making by Bulltown Historical Area and Association. And this is one of the kindergarten classes standing after they made their bread. It stretched out there in front of them. Apples are West Virginia state fruit. This presentation was given by Honey Choices, Sherri Bond. So she came in and she did a presentation about West Virginia or state fruit. It's the delicious apple. We had candle making by Pam Short and Brittany Bonnet. We've got a few revisions to make for next year. That was a little messier than we had planned on, but the kids had a great time. Their candles were very odd shape, but they had fun participating. Sawmill, Jesse King. He came from the forestry department. Primitive rugs, Riley Gerlach. Earlier you saw her father, David. He came. Riley's fourteen years old and she's a homeschool student from Calhoun County. And so she came and gave a presentation about her primitive rug making. We had market animals by Gilbert County 4-H members and FFA members. A lot of the animals came from local farmers, including myself. And we always tease around the elementary school because whenever we were here at our school here, we always had these hatchings of ducks and chickens. And so we always called it the Misfit Farm because we had lots of different animals. So the Misfit Perrin Farm got to come to this market animals and Trayvon Sturms, Mason Perrin, Matthew Perrin, Dalton Frye, Callie Carpenter, Maya Huff. I'm sure there's others that are missing, but Mr. Cox brought several of the FFA students and he brought them out as well as some of the 4-H members. Civil War Living History, Clayton Barker. Again, this was a new presentation this year and Mr. Barker was very phenomenal. Kids really liked the bread. They wanted to try it. Coal mining, Gary Williams. His son is at school, at our school. And the kids had a great time learning about the coal mining. They got to walk around, touch things, ask questions. They had a great time trying the things out. Molasses, Tina White and her girls. They did a presentation on the molasses. The students did get to sample the molasses this year. Storytelling by Sherri West. And then we had Ag Olympics and Appalachian Games. And this was presented by Gilbert County Extension Agents Daisy Bailey, Jamie Mullins, and then our FFA students and Mr. Cox. Do you have any questions?
It was very nice. It's a great asset to the kids.
And I think, you know, over time, we lose a lot of our trades. And I think it's important for children to see trades that you can carry out that, you know, we have our normal firefighters, teachers, police officers, but there's many things that they can do in life and carrying on our West Virginia heritage is very important.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Ronnie Baysmeyer, sixth grade teacher. I'd like to present to my students. I have Joe Carter and Trenton Rose. They're just here to share a little bit with you about we got to go on a field trip back in September and they just want to share with you some of the things they learned.
Hi, I'm Joe.
And I'm Trenton. And this is a presentation about the LST 325. This is the Greek letters on the front of the ship. This is also where the tanks and the men entered, also where we entered. And the bottom of the ship was flat so it could go up on the shore to let the tanks and men off on the shore.
This is the majesty. This ship could also carry up to thirty-two tanks, maybe even more. And if you see down there on the right picture, that yellow thing was to anchor all the things to the ship so they didn't go around.
This is where the ship accelerated and steered. This is where the captain steers and accelerates the ship. The highest speed it has gone is fourteen miles per hour on good current.
This is where the soldiers slept in World War II while they were going to Greece. The coffin were four high and there are twenty-four soldiers in a room, so it was very packed.
This is the shipping deck. That was when it was in the war and this was it now.
When we got to go there. It was way less crowded because I don't think there was that many jeeps or trucks on there. The first picture on the very left is a forty-millimeter bullet to load the gun in the middle. And on the right picture, you see Abram on the gun that used the forty-millimeter bullet.
And this is what you ought to do on the LST 325. Aim, 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 shoot out of the forty-millimeter gun. In the middle, we got to see where the soldiers slept. On the far right, you will see Landon and Ryer sticking their heads and they would cut out two men.
Rosie's the iconic poster influencing women in World War II. There were over twenty million Rosies working during World War II. They had jobs in shipyards, factories, offices, and elsewhere. They also helped out build the LST 325.
So do you have any questions?
Where did you get to eat when you went on the field trip?
There was a little place. There was like stairs that we got our lunch bags on and we ate there.
How cool.
And that was at the very end of the trip. Also, at the beginning, we got to, there was groups and one group on the ship, one sat down and there was a other set of shows that we started on. And we each had a leading member that told us stories about the LST when we moved around.
Sounds nice.
What did you think was the most fascinating part? Was there something that really surprised you that really kind of excited you or?
I just saw an anchor for the first time.
Okay, they're huge, aren't they?
Yeah, it was bigger than my head.
Yeah, huge.
I would like to say thank you to our teacher, Ms. Baysmeyer, and my principal, Mr. Putnam, and our superintendent, Patty Lauder, and all the board members that came here.
Thank you all very much.
All right, next up, I believe we have Mr. Putnam of the golf team.
Actually, is Mr. Wolf in the golf team? You've never seen Mr. Putnam golf. But I'd just like to introduce Mr. Wolf. He'll introduce the players. This is the second year in a row they got to go to the state golf tournament up in Wheeling. And I had an opportunity to go up and watch him play. And we're just extremely proud of them. And last year, we were worried that maybe Mr. Wolf is going to hang it up. And after he went to the States on that high note, but he's taken this group, some of them are repeaters, and they went to the States again this year and had a very successful year. We're very proud of them. They found the blue shirts today. I didn't even know they still had their blue shirts, but evidently Mr. Wolf found them and necked them out in blue. And maybe they'll be able to talk a little bit about what the experience been to them and we're just extremely proud of them. So, Mr. Wolf?
Excuse me, I can do it. I have something to do with my hands here. I'm going to be short and sweet as I can. My dad's watching Grayson and if you know my dad at all, he is not about the little kids. It's like pulling teeth to get him to watch Grayson. You know, I'm extremely proud and I'll use I very minimal right here because, you know, it is them, it is the team that's doing everything. I'm extremely proud though of where we've come. I mean, we, I took over the program a couple of years ago and we had one kid who made it to States. We had one who, you know, was one stroke away from making it. Last year, we, you know, we all make it as a team. And we have two seniors who really were, you know, were the anchors of that team. This year, it was a rebuilding year. You know, you have Austin Stewart, who's a sophomore. He went last year, but Austin, we both know, last year it was, Austin was just along for the ride, you know? But Austin really went and he worked and worked and worked and actually has shaved like twenty strokes off of his game. Logan came back to us this year. He played as a freshman and decided not to play last year. He wanted to do something with his grades. He thought he needed to have good grades. I don't know why. But, you know, he came back to us this year. He's now a junior. We have Seth Stewart, who's a freshman, and we have Braylon, who's a sophomore. Braylon was one of our three scores we actually used last year to make it to States. You know, I can't say how proud I am of what they've done, what they've accomplished. You know, we've got, we knew coming into this year and going into, if we made it to States, it was going to be a rebuilding. It wasn't going to be, we were going to come out and light the world up. They haven't seen a course like Ogilvy. Hopefully, next year, I can get them to Ogilvy, get them to some of these bigger courses. Mr. Putnam and I have already talked about, you know, getting, you know, the schedule worked out to where we can go to these bigger courses. They can see these bigger courses. But super proud of them, everything they've done. When I took over, yet again, our record, I think, we may, because I don't know if you know how wins and losses work in golf, because I didn't know, to be honest with you. I played golf in high school, but I didn't understand all this crazy stuff. But you win every time you beat a team at a match, okay? Which usually is a top four scores during the regular season. Our win-loss of our first year, I think, was like oh and oh and how many ever teams that we lost to. It was a ton. But we got better and got better after that and eventually, you know, we finished third in our region. But anyway, this year, we finished with a record of sixty-five and thirty. So, I mean, that's a huge improvement and with a young group like that, finished third in LKC, highest we've ever finished. So it, great improvement. We finished second in our region to the team who hosts the regional. So hopefully, we can, me and Coach Fraser can work together and get the region somewhere else, not let Wauhama beat us again. But I think Austin actually is going to come up and talk for the team maybe and talk a little bit. Austin's our team leader, so. The others are back there, they're too nervous. Logan's been sweating the whole time. He didn't want to speak. Here's Austin.
Well, I just wanted to start off by saying thank you for letting us come here and talk. And as Wolf said, last year, you know, we had two really good seniors and I think we were a little bit worried. It was, they were consistent, you know? And we're such a young team now, we're rebuilding, and we were worried. But I think now that we made it there, it's a real confidence booster. And, you know, next year, hey, we won't go for something big in States, but I think we can get regionals. We can beat out Wauhama and by our senior year, we'll be more experienced. We have a lot of talent and I really think we can go after States my senior year. And that's pretty much all I had to say, really. I don't know. But I wanted to thank all of you again. I know Joey was there at States, Mr. Putnam, thank you for showing up and thank you to everyone else who supported us on our way there.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, next up, I don't want to try and mess up his last name, so I'm going to say we have Sam with Neola and he's going to give us, and he'll give us a good presentation that we're glad to, you know, have you and interested in.
As you know, we've been looking at updating our policy manual. And as we've talked before, you know, it's a massive project to undertake. And Sam Coball is with us tonight and he is a representative of Neola and he's going to explain the workings of Neola and also how it ties in as a complimentary addition to board docs. One section of it that would pertain to policy. Sam?
Thank you. I noticed that one did well for the presentation for me. We'll try to get it back on, but it's not necessary. You know, the old adage, never follows students or animals. So that's why I'm going, I'd certainly like to congratulate those students. The night presenter did, they did an excellent job. He knows how to use a smart board, but this is a dumb operator. See if he can get that back up. Good, thank you. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Neola, our company, what we do and a little bit about my background and talk about how we do it and then answer whatever questions you may have regarding Neola. First of all, Neola is a company that does policymaking. That's all we do. We're not a law firm or nothing else, but we just do policies. We've been in business over forty years. We work in six states and we have over fifteen hundred clients. Those clients range in size from four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand students in Miami-Dade or Hillsboro around Tampa, all the way to, I think, eight or twelve students in the Upper P Peninsula of Michigan. And I tell you that because it indicates that no matter what size district you are, with things changing as rapidly as change, state laws, court cases, federal laws, someone has to be up on that and that's what we try to do. We are a sole source provider. We don't know of anybody else that provides what we provide. Those six states that we work in are mostly Midwest, Michigan, Wisconsin, Ohio, Indiana. We work in West Virginia and also Florida. A little bit about my background. I've been in education all my life and in your packets, I got, everything I'm going to tell you is also in that packet, so my background is there. Just let you know that if you won't be working with someone who's unfamiliar with education, I've been a teacher, a coach, principal assistant, superintendent, superintendent, and a few other names I'd rather not people repeat. But anyway, that's my background and I'd be working with you if we'd be lucky enough to get a contract with you. So let me tell you what we do. We provide you with over four hundred templates. And I got a list here that runs from anywhere from zero, zero, zero up to nine thousand and we've got ten sections. And each of those sections, we have provide templates. We work with your staff here, the name committees. For example, if I work on six thousand, it's finance, then we would have a team get together, meet, look at our templates, mark our templates, and then meet with me and review that. And then we would send that to our production office who does all the processing. You do not do any processing. We handle everything electronically and get it back to you. So we'll get that back to you, a clean copy. And then you can review it again if you wish, make any changes, get it back to us. We'll get it back to you. We'll do that as much as necessary. What we want to do is make sure that we have a policy manual that fits Gilbert County's needs. No one else's but Gilbert. No one else is at Gilmore County. All the districts that you work with, those two districts will be the same, and we have a lot of choices. For example, I've got 2,000 in your pack, and I put field trips in there. Can I find it? 23, what is that, 2340?
Yes.
Field trips. All right, that would, you see that number is 2340. It's, you know, it means it's a policy. And then you can begin to see we've got parrot states there. So the staff would look at that. If they want that language in your policy, they're just mark, just mark an X there. They don't want it, they'll mark it out. So they go all the way through that policy, go on that, to that selection, and when they're finished, then of course, they'll meet with me. But I wanted to show you this because other than developing policies, we also develop administrative guidelines, or some people will call them procedures. With that, in essence, is to put your policies into effect. As you all know, the boards, one of their major roles is to approve policies, and administrative guidelines are just the superintendent putting it into effect. So I showed you this within a package, you're gonna see there's a 2340A, 2340B, C, D, E, F, depending on how many you may need, but that indicates that's administrative guideline. Also, at the back of that package, you're gonna see F, 2340F1, F2, F3. We have as many forms as you would need, so you can see how all that ties, you go to the same numbering system. Get your policy administrative guidelines, the forms have all the same number, forms will be identified by saying F1. Now, before you ever get these templates, they have been vetted by an attorney. We used it in some more shows in West Virginia, but we also have an in-house attorney. We also use attorneys for specialities from Washington DC and Chicago. For example, nondiscrimination policies, that type of thing, we might use a law firm out of Washington DC to approve our templates. And the other thing I like about this is you'll never get behind, if you ask, do what we ask you to do, we're gonna send you out two updates a year. And those updates have been averaging about 40 changes to policies, administrative guidelines or forms per update, so two updates a year. And we'll work with you on that and get that updated, and again, post everything to your website. There was a question asked today, what about our website? We just attach it, link it to our, our policy documents to your website. That's all we do. And then we use a Board Docs platform, and Judy has been mentioning that. It's not the full-blown Board Docs, and I think it may be reviewed here and may not want, but the platform for policy is, is what we use. We had them develop that for us a number of years ago when the federal government phased out a, a platform that we were using. With that, if there was anything else I need to let you know, the major thing is I wanna tell you, we work in a lot of districts. We work in 26 in West Virginia, and I think you have a list there in the map of those. The important thing is, we update twice a year, and you know as well as I do that if you don't update on an annual basis like that, you're gonna do this process a whole lot of times, and that's a whole lot of, we feel, waste of money and time and energy. If you just update twice a year, then you never had to undertake this task again. And again, they're all vetted by an attorney. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll certainly be happy to try to answer for you.
So just so I'm understanding, it would be like a rolling process over time, like we would start at the beginning or whatever, and, you know, start with the 1,000s and make the changes needed, and then bring that back to the board to be put out on review and approved, and then we would just
Right.
Go through it like that over about how long does that usually take?
It depends on district. You put emphasis on it. I've had some districts have one district that did the policies, administrative guidelines and forms, which started in December sometime, was finished by July. Most will take nine months or more. I've got some clients that have started and never finished. But the important person, I mentioned yesterday, Judy, today, is the person here at this district that would drive it here. You need someone that can get things done and organize and say, all right, we're gonna have the committee come in, and we're gonna meet at this time. Sam will be in to meet with you and that type of thing. If you don't drive the process and schedule the process, then you probably won't get it done quite frankly. But, but you are right, what we do is the first thing we do is we wanna get it updated, get it completely caught up. And then we have you Then we have, this, this in fact will look just like your screen, but it's loading policies out, it didn't come up yet, but we would ask you, let you have them out for review, and we'll help you do that. We can, we can do that for you, as a matter of fact. Once you're satisfied with them, we really ask the, the district to bring a section at a time to you. So we finish the 1,000 section, get it, you can review it. We don't want you to act on it then, we just want you to review it, you have any change, and we can make changes. We'll do that for each section, and then when you're finished, then we're ready to adopt the entire policy manual. Now, what I was gonna show you is a resolution, but it hasn't come up yet. But the resolution will, doesn't say that we're rescinding all existing policies and adopting the new manual. So that's, that would be, we don't put a date at the bottom of the page yet when you adopt it yet, because in the front of that manual, it'll say policy is adopted such, such a date. But every time we make a change to that policy, then we put the new date, so you can see what last time was updated. So that's kind of the process we, we go through. And you've got 25 hours of mine for face-to-face time for policies, and another 20, if you go to administrative guidelines or forms, you've got another 25 hours with me.
And one of the things that I wanted to make certain that they understood, because Sam is in my offices afternoon, so I'm busy, you know? And we talk, and, you know, with, when they send a policy, and then our homework is, all of our options are there, we just need to look at them, because I thought, oh no, we will have to come up with how, and it is not. They will be there in front of the committee, and then we will fine-tune, you know, what is appropriate for Gilmore County. And, and then, and then also, I had asked the question about, like, our Title IX policy, which is a relatively new policy, and what if we wanted to use that? So if you would let them?
Sure. It's a good question, and it rises. First of all, when we give you all these templates, we warrant, we warranty them. So if you would, you know, one of our policies, you follow it, you get some kind of legal difficulty, then Neola will warranty that. We've had natural attorneys looking at it, it should be correct, so we'll warrant it. Now, a policy that you come up with your own is called a district-specific policy, and we don't warranty it, but we can use it. There's no problem with it. In fact, this one is developed by a law firm, we would assume it would be correct, so there's no problem. Only thing we do is we just take that and put our numbering system on it, and that takes care of it. And I think we developed a form, and it also, a form. Same thing, that's what we would do, just on that form, it'd be Form, or the policy number would be F1.
And then, of course, with Neola, their policy, if it was form-appropriate, they would provide the form for us.
Other questions?
The clarification of just our homework.
Yeah. There's, there's what the resolution looks like. I don't know, you can read it from there and I'll bet just essentially what I told you. And if they have policies here, and these areas you wanna look at, I'd be more than happy to bring them up. Real quickly.
And then just once again, with Board Docs, the free part of Board Docs would be the part that pertains to policies. Then with the rest of it, if, you know, anybody expressed an interest with taking minutes or doing those types of things, that would not be included. That's an extra option.
Yeah, but it was, I mentioned something I was gonna mention. Here where it is. Other questions?
Well, and then, well, you know, another thing too, because one of the first things I asked him, I had our policy manual, I said, does it make any difference how many policies, policies we have? And that answer was no.
Yeah, we, we provide you with all our templates. It doesn't matter what you have or don't have, and that's what I was gonna mention, the updates, the cost of the updates, each update is, I think, around $26, $100. So
When you say, is that per policy or just the whole?
The whole thing.
The whole?
Of course, as I indicated to you, we probably average at least 40 changes per update. And there's, you got to feed it or something, you got to feed for that, and I think it's $6.75 to maintain your website. We do that, so.
And there are two different options with the fee. You know, the first one is just doing?
Policies, or you can do policies, administrative guidelines, the forms, and traces on that. Most fine districts do the whole thing, but I have one or two that
That we can do policies and then digital?
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's one fee, but then if we do the administrative regulations, and of course, with those, that's the fine tuning of how we're going to carry, follow through what's something that we're seeing is going to happen, and that would kind of give the steps of how we are going to see that that does happen.
You know, the other good thing about this manual we're providing, it's got a great search engine. So if I go up here and search and put in field trips, it's gonna bring up every policy you have, every administrative guideline, every form pertaining to field trips. So it's no longer looking through a whole long list
Yeah.
Just your search engine, hit it, and you got it.
And then there's also a search engine that will do field trips for the United States.
Yeah, any, we work with Board Docs, and so they have a whole lot of clients, so if you put in a search, it's gonna search all their clients to see what they do with field trips. So sometimes districts find that useful, just to do a little research.
I was telling him that I consistently looked at other counties, their policies, and I kept saying, seeing Neola.
Well, thank you, Judy.
Thank you very much. You'll just go on the road.
Yeah, any questions? I certainly appreciate your opportunity to be here tonight, and certainly wish you luck. I know you've got some major decisions to make tonight and near future, so I wish you the best.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. We're going to Calhoun Career Center update, and I believe Superintendent Lauer has that ready for us.
Yes, we had a meeting on Tuesday, the 18th, where the Healthcare Expo, which Gilmore and Calhoun students will be participating in, is November the 4th. They also talked about mini-med grants. They passed out the enrollment, which I thought was, was interesting. Calhoun's 12th grade students, 42% are at the Career Center. Gilmore has 41%. 11th grade, Calhoun has 25%, we have 35%. The 10th grade is 14%, and we only have 5%. 9th grade is 0, and we have 3%. So we're really close there. There's not this disconnect that's been in the past. So I thought that was interesting, too, to see that. And then they also spoke about the SBA project, and they went ahead and picked Williams and Driver, and what that is gonna be is sole money for air quality HVAC on the main building. And so that will begin, hopefully, as soon as they get their HVACs, like, we're still waiting on. So that, that was the, the meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and we'll just take those minutes one at a time, if that's okay with you. Okay, so the first one we have is October 10th, 2022 Work Session Meeting Minutes.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the October 10th, 2022 meeting.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the October 10th Work Session Meeting Minutes. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to the October 10th, 2022 Regular Meeting Minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the October Regular Meeting Minutes.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the October 10th, 2022 Regular Meeting Minutes. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, then we'll go on to the October 13th, 2022 Work Session Minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October 13th, 2022 meeting of the Gilmore County Board of Education, and in doing so, affirm the county board president was directed by the Gilmore County Board of Education to bring before the board Jeff Huffman, Tony Mini, and Joey Frazier for consideration for the position of interim superintendent for a term commencing on or after November 1st, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the October 13th, 2022 Work Session Minutes. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, and we will move on to the Treasurers Report. Clay, you have the floor.
I want the gavel.
All right. Tonight, a couple of things have the schedule of checks to be written. There was one issue or question that came up, I just thought I would mention it, as worth mentioning. You will see on there a bus purchase for $104,135, I think it was. That is not for this year. That was a bus that we ordered last year that we just got and paid for this year. So that was approved prior in last year. You will see in the next, probably in the next board meeting, Joe, a new purchase or request to buy a bus with this year's funding. Just so that you guys know, every year, the state provides us bus replacement money to every county, depending on the size of the county and the condition of your bus fleet, which is kind of a game that they play, you get awarded a certain amount of money to replace a bus. Kind of the, the more up-to-date and current your bus fleet is, the more money they tend to give you. It's not an exact science, but that's typically the way that it works. We do have some buses still on our fleet. Last year, we were able to buy two, so we are making progress on that, but there are still some that kind of get, they're too old for consideration, so the state kind of throws them off of our calculation. But that is something that we are working on to get that in its best condition as possible so that we can get the maximum amount of funding to replace buses. So the next thing that I have, and I have sent it to you, I apologize for that, I was at a conference. I have not used an Ethernet cord in a very long time, nor did I have one on my person to be able to access the internet at Camp Dawson. I was not given one, or they came around to the meeting on one of the last days of the meeting, does anybody need an Ethernet cord? Well, that would have been nice to have several days ago, but, okay. So you have in front of you, and I had sent an email earlier today, when I go on to print out and, and capture the information for the financial reports that you're used to seeing, I got that message that I, that I gave to you, and it says, due to Weavis 2.0, basically, that template, that format that they gave us to use is not updating. It doesn't matter how current I am on my months, when I go to print that month's report, it's still giving me the same information as it did the first month of the year. I went ahead and printed that out for you, because if you look at that, everything that you see on that report currently is what we had projected to spend, what we had projected to receive. So that is essentially our budget for FY '23, broken down by category, something you're not used to seeing, but in this instance, it would give you maybe a better look as to what our budget is, how it's, how it's broken out, what we, what we're projected to receive here. how it's, how it's broken out, uh, what we, what we're projected to receive here, what we're projected to spend here. It kind of gives you a little bit better picture, um, of how our money is and how our funding is budgeted. Are there any questions other than what I mentioned about the checks to be written?
All righty, so I'll entertain a motion on scheduled checks to be written.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the schedule of checks to be written. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
With the, uh, financial report, I mean, as soon as we can get that information to upload and, and do what it's supposed to do, I'll keep you updated throughout that process. Are there any questions the way that is presented now?
Senator, we don't need to approve anything there. We just wait?
Yeah, we'll just wait. I mean, if there's, if there's not really anything other than the budget, which you've previously approved. So, but I did want to get, I did want to get you that so you could at least see it. And I've gone through, um, clear through September trying to get it to do something, and it still gives me the same. July's report looks the same as September, so, um... I guess I'm next.
All right. So we'll move into new business and first item, FY twenty-two financial statements.
Right. I had sent in, last week I had sent in our template to the state. Uh, there was, um, there was a formula formatting link error on our template. It wasn't anything was out of balance. It just was not linking and communicating, um, throughout the template. And our, our financial statement template, if you want to see something that's an absolute work of art, uh, stop by my office sometime and I'll show you that template. It is absolutely huge. Uh, and each tab communicates with the next tab. And if they don't communicate properly, you think you're off a bunch of money, and you're really not. It's just because this formula is not right. Uh, they have corrected that. I got that back at three o'clock today. Uh, so it is printed out. It is given to you. What you see in front of you, if you look at the statement of net position, that is basically our balance sheet. And that is on a district-wide level. We have our very basic financial statements, which you will see, and a lot of you are probably used to seeing, Brett, for one. You'll have a balance sheet, and then you'll have your revenue and expenses, which is your income statement. The district-wide kind of expands on that a little bit. Uh, it takes in, it takes into consideration, uh, other liabilities, like with our OPEB and our retirement. Uh, those are additional spreadsheets and, uh, on top of our general financial statements. And all that information feeds into the district-wide. What you have in front of you is what we are required by law to send out into the community for them to see. If I sent the whole financial statement to the paper, Myra would love it, but we probably wouldn't be able to afford to pay for it because it's absolutely huge. Uh, this is what would be required by law to send to, out in a publication in the newspaper. So that is what I'm presenting to you. I don't know at this time if you want to consider it informational, get a chance to look at it, get back to me. I did want to give it to you. I understand it's last minute. By all means, look at it, ask questions. Um, it's, it's your job to know this, um, and it's my job to communicate it and explain it uh, the best way that I know how to you and to, uh, the taxpayers and the voters in Gilmer County and anybody that has any interest in it as public information. Are there, I know it's kind of been, I won't ask for questions. It's kind of been short-lived. Um, I don't know how the board wishes to act, um, on it. But I will, I will wait, I will wait for a board decision and see what you want to do before it goes to the paper.
What's the opinion of the board?
I'd say we table it. We have a meeting Thursday. Ask, maybe get with Clay and actually go up and talk to him. Hit like the real high points if he wants to let you know, explain something. All right, I make a motion to table it.
Do I have a second? A second.
We are, we're in no time restriction.
Technically, it was already due, uh, but the board, the state is aware. I've been working with them. Uh, I mean, it doesn't need to like another month.
Right, right, right. We're talking Thursday.
Yeah, they, they have been working with me to help me, uh, get it in. Just a lot of unforeseen circumstances and different things like that.
Tech problems.
But they have been aware since the day it was due that I was running behind. Uh, and they are helping me. I mean, it's not necessarily a great thing. I don't want it to be behind, but it wasn't done. It wasn't calculating outright. So we're doing the best we can to get it submitted.
Okay, so I've got a second. A, a motion, a second, to, uh, to table this agenda item until the special meeting that we will have on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. If you can add that to the agenda, Lisa, please.
Yes, this Thursday?
Yes. And, okay, so all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next is policy ten fifty, the nepotism to be placed on review.
And that, I'll just say, was reviewed by the policy committee. Um, in that committee, we looked at, you know, advisory opinions from the Ethics Commission. And, you know, we looked at a legal opinion that had been written before that was requested. And, you know, I mean, basically, the, the county policy was so old. And I mean, it really was just basically overstepped what, you know, state law requires.
The Ethics Commission is basically the end all of it. And so any question needs to go to the Ethics Commission and have an opinion, so... As far as the county goes, there's not really...
So, I mean, I, I would make a motion to put policy ten fifty, new call on nepotism, on review.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to place policy ten fifty on nepotism on review. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All righty, now we're to appointment of board member to Calhoun Gilmer Career Center Administrative Council.
And they do do those by team. So I mean, you can participate in person, or they also offer it through the teams. And it's at eleven o'clock on the third Tuesday of every month.
Make a motion to appoint Dr. Barr?
Second. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to appoint Dr. Barr to the Calhoun Gilmer Career Center Administrative Council. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All righty.
I move pursuant to six nine A four two of the West Virginia Code that the board go into executive session to discuss personnel and personnel matters, which if discussed in public might affect adversely the reputation of any person.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we enter executive session. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Let me bring this and this. And that.